...is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the Board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Mr. Schuster.
Here.
Ms. Seeling.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Workman.
Here.
Officially, it's called order. Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, tonight we have the pleasure, Kate, who's a John Adams Student School Board Member, is going to lead us in the pledge tonight.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the visible, liberty, and justice world.
2.01, Approval of Agenda. Are there any changes?
There are no changes.
Move it, people.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 3.01, Recognitions, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I'm going to call Ann Pagel from Century and also, I think she's going to have Ken join her to make an exciting announcement for us.
Hello, Board. Thank you, thank you, Superintendent Munoz. This is Ken Galbreth. He is a Century senior and one of my business education students and my accounting student. So, the exciting news is that Ken and a few other students competed at the state level at our BPA conference, which is a technical organization for students pursuing careers in business and technical fields. And Ken was advancing to the national competition in Dallas next week. He'll be leaving Wednesday through Saturday and competing in his competition Advanced Accounting. So, did you want to think a few things, Ken?
Yeah. It's been, for the last two years, I've done BPA and it's really been a great way to just kind of see how many people in the community are wanting to get involved in business. And all the judges at both the regional and state levels have been very involved and you can always go up to them, ask them questions, they're interested, and they want to get you interested in business. And I think it's really a good thing to try and encourage kids to go into at such a young age. And I'm just really grateful to have taken part in that for the last two years.
Want to talk about your future plan?
I plan on going to Iowa State University in the fall, majoring in accounting, probably auditing, because tax is not the most exciting thing in the world. But yeah, it's hopefully going to be a really funny time.
So, thank you for your support of our programs, especially our CTE programs. They really do make a difference for many, many, many students. So, thank you so very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
3.02, Teacher Appreciation Week. Mr. Munoz.
Yes. We're going to start off with the video and then I'll make a few comments after that. Next week, May 7th through the 11th, we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week. So, we made a little quick video. Good evening, Rochester Public Schools teachers. This week, we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week. We all have the opportunity to impact children in a positive way every day and give them hope and help them build a better future.
There's an educational quote by Jan Lieberman that says, "Great teachers empathize with their kids, respect them, and believe that there is something special in each of them that can be built upon." And every day when I'm out traveling in our buildings, I am lucky to see that in the Rochester Public Schools, our students experience that every single day. So, on behalf of the REA, I would like to say thank you and I appreciate everything you do on behalf of our students and our families every day of the year.
You are the molders of their dreams, the gods who build and crush their young beliefs of right or wrong. You are the spark that sets aflame the poet's hand or lights the flame in some great singer's song. You are the gods of young, the very young. You are the guardian of million dreams. Your every smile or frown can heal or pierce a heart. Yours are the 100 lives, 1,000 lives. Yours is the pride of loving them, the sorrow too. Your patient work, your touch, make you the god of hope that fills their souls with dreams and makes those dreams come true. Again, thank you for everything that you do every day to give our students hope and to make their dreams come true. Thank you very much. I would like to take credit for that poem, but I didn't write it. It was actually in 1986, Guy Dowd, who was a Minnesota teacher, was the National Teacher of the Year, and that was a poem that President Reagan read to him when he was at the White House to visit the President as part of his recognition. So, what I thought is really appropriate and explains the great things that our teachers do. And many times when I'm out in public and I may offend some people when I say this, but that's okay, I tell our teachers that their profession is the most important profession there is in this country. And all of us wouldn't be where we're at today if we didn't have good teachers. And I really believe that the teachers do have the most important profession there is for anybody to have, either at the K-12 level, preschool level, or at the college level, it's something that is very important to our society and our country and for the success of our country. And I can tell you, I've been in public education over 30 years and it is becoming more challenging to be a teacher nowadays in the classroom. It's been a long time since I've been in the classroom as a teacher, but things have really changed over those years. And the work that our staff do every day for our kids is amazing and unfortunately, we don't always thank them enough. But the great thing about this week is that we get to really take the time out and really thank them. So, I encourage all of you in the audience, or those of you who may watch the replay of this board meeting, that you reach out to at least one teacher and tell them thank you for what they've done for you or what they're doing for your children. So, again, thank you for our teachers in Rochester Public Schools. They do a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Thank you, teachers. And I thought you wrote that poem.
Yeah, I know.
3.03, National School Nutrition Employee Week, May 7th through 11th. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, also, May 7th and 11th, which we wanted to talk about it this week instead of waiting till our next board meeting, is National School Nutrition Employee Week. And this week, we recognize the hard-working individuals in our school cafeterias who fuel our students with healthy meals so that they can succeed in and outside of the classroom. Many of our staff members are on the front lines early in the morning to help prepare nutritious breakfasts and lunches while others may work later hours to provide supper meals. We appreciate and thank all of our RPS Student Nutrition Services employees for their dedication, care, and professionalism as they work to do, as they do in furthering better lives for our students. Some interesting, Sherry provided some interesting facts for me. In 1998, there were 102 staff employees. Presently, we have 130, and 20 of them are still working with us. That's 20 years of service for Rochester Public Schools. Three sites now serve supper meals or dinner meals, that's the ALC, JA, and Riverside, with three more sites planned to join in next school year. There are 11 summer food sites with two new park sites. Silver Lake and Friendship Park are being added this year. 662,000 student breakfasts were served in the 1617 school year compared to 145,000 breakfasts back in 1998. 1.7 million student lunches were served last year compared to 1.4 million lunches back in 98. So, just some facts to show you the hard work that they do and we really appreciate everything they do. So, thank you for all of the SNS staff members.
Thank you. 3.04, School Board Committee Assignments Update. Any board members who would like to give us an update on committee work they've done the last couple of weeks? Mr. Schuster.
I actually have one that's tomorrow night. Office of County Youth Commission, I'm looking forward to. Our very own Janie Gibson is going to come and have a good dialogue on mental health curriculum in the schools. I got a feeling it's going to be a good discussion tomorrow night.
Thank you. Ms. Workman.
Yes, I had the pleasure of attending the School Board Listening Post at John Adams, was that last week, with Ms. Marvin and Ms. Becker and Ms. Seeling for a few minutes until she went to a PTA meeting. And it was really interesting to hear their input and their concerns. And my takeaway is that there's a lot of interest in process in terms of how do we do things? How are, for example, how are teachers evaluated? Not that they wanted to know specific teachers necessarily, but just what is the process for doing that? So, I felt very good about it and they were encouraging us to have some more, so I hope we get some on the schedule.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one more thing. Is it okay if I share this? It's not really a committee meeting?
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks to Mr. Schuster for just kind of dropping this in my ear and I was able to get some information to share with you concerning the governor who has, is calling for some emergency school aid. It would be one-time money. And for Rochester, that amount would be $2,676,691 based on 17,562 students at $126 a piece. And 90% of it would be the first year and 10% of it would be the second fiscal year. So, this is one-time money, so that means that after that year, it would go away. But it certainly would help a lot of school districts out and we'll see what happens in the legislature. And the session is supposed to end on May 21st.
Thank you. And let me just echo Ms. Workman's thanks, I guess, to those parents, mostly, who came to the Listening Post that we hosted at John Adams. When the community shows up to talk with the superintendent at his Listening Post with the Boards, at Listening Post, it gives us really good information. We can't always give answers to questions that arise, but I can assure you that we listen, we take notes, we bring your questions back to the Board, we use the information we get from the community as we plan how to move forward. So, the more we can be involved with the community, the more we can hear from you, even if you're not getting the answers that you want, and sometimes you don't. Let me assure you that we hear you and we value that input. And a number of people from the school district also went to a community gathering last night that was co-hosted by Community Baptist Church and the Diversity Council about unconscious racial bias. And again, the more we can become aware, the more we can come together as a community. And this was an example, I think, of the community coming together to talk about what we're doing well and what we're not doing well. I think the stronger we become. Okay, anybody else? Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items people would like removed for separate consideration? Ms. Becker.
4.03.
4.0 which?
03.
Okay. Anything else? Then...
Move approval of everything except 4.03.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And going back to 4.03, Ms. Becker.
I just have a question. I mean, it says that it's, and this maybe is just a typo or not, but it says this is just a draft. So, we're approving the draft. I mean, in the resolution, it says we're approving the graduate profile. But, I mean, looking at it, it says it's a draft. So, I'm just wanting clarification on that.
No, it's actually the, if it's officially approved tonight, it will be the official document that we...
Okay, well, then I'm just thinking we probably shouldn't have draft.
We can remove that.
Any other questions or discussion on that? Then, item 4.03, the resolution is be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the graduate profile.
With the removal.
With removal of the word "draft."
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And, Mr. Munoz, retirement.
Yes, I would like to recognize the staff that we have retiring. The first one is Gerald Chase, teacher for Emotionally/Behaving Disordered at Kellogg Middle School, and 33 years of service to the district. Sandra Dankbar, physical therapist at Churchill Elementary, 13 years of service. Terry Enquist, elementary reading teacher at Bishop Elementary, 24 years of service. And Kathy Plant, special education professional at George Gibbs Elementary, 20 years of service. We thank all four of them for their service to the district.
Thank you. 5.01, Washington Math Materials Recommendation. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I will call Chad, if you want to bring your group up.
Good evening, Superintendent Munoz, Board Chair Marvin, School Board Members, Cabinet and Clerk Edgar. Washington is grateful for the opportunity to share a glimpse into our Washington math-articulation cycle journey this evening. My name is Chad Schrader, the Washington Principal. I have three other staff joining me this evening. Kim Reed, teacher. Diane Pritchard, first grade teacher. And Stacy Allison, our instructional coach. We also may have a few other staff and families in attendance this evening too as well. Our goal, in the short time that we have, will be to explain why Washington is making a change in our math-articulation, our math curriculum, describe what Washington did over the past 12 to 14 months, share who was involved in our articulation cycle, and clarify where we are at now and where we plan on going on this journey.
All right. So, Washington adopted the current math curriculum. They have the Harcourt Math Curriculum in 2002. So, over the last 16 years, they've been using the same curriculum, but the teachers have worked really hard to regularly update that and align that with the standards to keep it current. And we find ourselves in a situation where the curriculum is out of print and outdated and we aren't able to reorder any of the materials. Even if we were able to reorder them, we found that Harcourt has required a lot of modifications in outside materials to support that, particularly as the increased rigor on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments and the increased rigor in the state assessments. And that's required the teachers to make a lot of shifts in how they plan their lessons or give their instruction. And finally, one of the areas that we've really focused on is trying to increase our understanding and our use of the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. Eight mathematical practices that the district as a whole in math have been looking forward to bringing into their instruction to better align our instruction with best practice.
So, what have we been up to in the past 12 to 14 months? A lot. We've been busy. In May of 2017, we were fortunate to have the Curriculum and Instruction Department from Rochester Public Schools come in and give us staff development and introduce us to the NCTM Mathematical Practices and provide a firm foundation of research for us to base our process on. In June, our Math Ad-Hoc Committee at Washington was finalized and there are nine members on that, parents from Washington. June, July, and August, we started getting busy reading the books that were in our Fall Book Study. In August, the Site Council and Math Ad-Hoc Committee developed responsibilities for their year, and there was a family survey that went out. September, October, and November, 100% of our classroom teachers participated in research-based Fall Book Studies, and that was Mathematical Mindsets, Principles to Action, and Number Talks. In November, we gathered feedback with the family survey and that was shared with our Site Council. November and December, our staff worked together to develop our rubric, which is later used to score the curriculum. From there, in 2018, in January and February, we took multiple days to score five different curriculum. We met vertically, both K-5 and then also in a primary team and an intermediate team to discuss the strengths of our top three choices and develop some questions that we might still have so that we could pursue those. And in January and February, we also participated with the District Math Articulation Cycle in vendor presentation so that we could better get to know the curriculum that way as well. Then in March, we had eight staff that went up to Wayzata Public Schools and was able to see firsthand Bridges Math in practice. We also had a number of staff that participated in a conference call with West St. Paul, and that was to get to know two other curriculum a little bit better. And then finally, we visited schools right here in Rochester so that we could take a deeper look at Everyday Math IV. And we met with the instructional coaches afterwards to debrief and ask some of the questions and get to know the curriculum better. Finally, in April, we finalized our staff input, met with Site Council, met with the Math Ad-Hoc Committee at Washington, and here we are. It's May, and we're bringing forth a recommendation to you, the School Board. On a side note, we've had several of our staff at Washington participate in the District Math Articulation Cycle, and that has been an ongoing process. And our Washington one has been running parallel to it, but the district one was in 2016, 2017 school year, the summer of 2017, and 2017, 2018. So, we've had quite the process and have looked very deeply into our choices.
So, Diane has mentioned a number of folks that were involved in our articulation cycle. So, all of our certified staff took part in this over the last year, year and a half. As she mentioned, we also had some help from our district curriculum instruction. Hats off to Janie and her folks, Kate Palmquist, and the team that they have that helped us with our book studies and also with the learning of the mathematical practices and the NCTM Mathematical Practices. We have a site leadership team that was extensively involved in talking and getting feedback from various groups. We have a Washington Site Council at Washington that was developed back in 1996 when the school was formed, and that consists of three staff, three parents, and myself, and they were involved. Diane mentioned also the Math Ad-Hoc Committee. That was nine separate parents that were involved throughout the last year, learning side-by-side with us and providing feedback to us as well. And obviously, with our math survey that we sent out to our Washington families, all families had the chance to participate and share their voice.
So, where do we go next? After all of our hard work, the hard work of all the staff at Washington, they did come to a consensus and they brought two curriculum to the forefront. That would have been Bridges 2.0 and Everyday Math IV. We did bring those choices to the Site Council, like Chad said, and the Math Ad-Hoc Committee members. And then those two groups provided us feedback and recommendations. And then site leadership did review the feedback and ultimately decided to bring forward Bridges 2.0 to the School Board, to you guys. And so, this informational item is what we're bringing to you tonight. Our goal is to have Bridges 2.0 material into the hands of our teachers, hopefully prior to summer break. And we do have an initial two-day training that's scheduled for August 21st and August 22nd of this year.
And as closing, I just want to publicly thank these three folks, along with our staff that extensively worked on, day in and day out, it seemed like we were talking math every single day for the last year, but we really took it serious and really looked at it in depth to find out what would work for Washington. And we knew that this was a decision that wouldn't impact only just this year or next year, it would impact us for several years. And so, it was just nice to see, these three folks were involved in the District Math Articulation Cycle too, so they could bring us back some feedback to us in our, at our site to give us a balance of what the district is doing and give us some feedback so that we can provide some information to our staff. But it's just hats off, we, I'm very pleased and proud of our staff, the work that they've done over the course of the last year, year and a half. Questions?
Thank you for the presentation. I was thinking, it was just a month or so ago, in fact, April the 17th, when we, the Board, was reviewing the Everyday Math IV of the entire district. As I looked at the resolution then, it was that all elementary schools, with the exception of Washington Elementary. So, can you tell me what's unique about Washington that would cause you guys to not necessarily fit the general mold of the Everyday Math, which was spoken of so highly? And not that I'm asking you to compare Everyday Math with Bridges 2, but I'm just curious as to when it seemed like there was this real passion for Everyday Math IV and belief that it was really going to help make a difference in our students and their love of math and performance on test. Could you perhaps speak to that? And then, just on a side, the cost associated with it.
Sure. And I think maybe Janie can help with the cost aspect of it. We don't necessarily have all night to talk about how special Washington is, but Washington is a special place and it's a great place to be with high expectations from our staff and from our families. We take it very seriously. You know, we have a philosophy at Washington that meshed a little bit better with what we thought Bridges had. You know, without going into great detail about the differences between the two, Everyday Math IV brings a lot. And like we showed you, it was right neck and neck when we looked at the two and we brought forward both of those. And you can speak on, I mean, the three of you can speak on that a little bit too, if you'd like, but Bridges 2.0, we felt really matched our philosophy at Washington a little bit better with regard to how the layout is of the program, the support that's given. A lot of the NCTM Mathematical Practices blends well with Everyday Math IV, but it also does well with Bridges 2.0. Bridges 2.0 is a fairly new curriculum. It's only a couple of years old, whereas Everyday Math IV has several years of experience and data to bring forward with it, but we felt like it really matched our philosophy a little bit.
Well, I think also, Don, they're part of, since they're a district-wide option school, they're a core knowledge school, so that's why it's not uncommon for them to use different materials than the other elementars because of their core knowledge philosophy.
Yep. And there's objectives in all the core content area that we have to adhere to that really matched well with Bridges 2 as well. So, there's objectives in math that we felt really matched with the Bridges 2.0. I don't know if any of you want to share anything?
We just have one more layer to blend in.
Sure.
Right.
And it just was slightly a better match with the Bridges.
Yeah.
Mr. Schuster.
Couple of questions. So, if it was neck and neck, I guess from a numbers point of view, when we approved the rest of the district's math curriculum, it came with a cost. And then, when we prove this, it'll come with a cost. And I've got a feeling you don't have the answer, but if they're that close, what is the cost difference between the two? You know, what if Washington used the rest of districts? I mean, would there be an additional cost to the district if you used the district-wide curriculum over what the cost is for this curriculum? You know, when I hear they're very similar and we have to worry about fiscal responsibility of the district...
Sure. When you say similar, are you talking the structure of... When you say similar, are you talking the structure of the curriculum itself?
Right, like I heard a couple of times, they compared neck and neck. To me, that's very similar.
Well, when we looked at the curriculums, they were neck and neck. There's some distinct differences between each of the curriculums and how they're laid out. And we felt like that Bridges 2.0 really matched the way that Washington liked and how it was laid out. So, when I say neck and neck, there was some good discussion and healthy discussion between our staff members, but when it came down to it, it really felt like that Bridges matched some of the core knowledge objectives that we have, but also some of the philosophy that we have at Washington too as well. So I don't, Janie, can you speak on behalf of the?
I can share just a little bit. So, interestingly enough, as the district articulation cycle or math committee went through this work as well, Bridges was also one that rose to the top for them. In the district case, they chose Everyday Math for a couple of reasons. There it had a little bit more of a financial impact, because we already had all of our kindergarten and four full sites that were utilizing Everyday Math. So if we were to make a full switch to Bridges, we would have had to buy new materials for kindergarten as well as all four sites. In terms of, would it have been more cost efficient for us to purchase Everyday Math for Washington versus Bridges? It would have, but it would not have been a significant difference in cost. And so when their committee came forward and said it makes more sense for them to use Bridges, we have to go with what is best for the, you know, the dollar amount was not cost prohibitive to the point of saying, nope, you have to go this direction. It was fairly close. And the long-term financial cost is going to be comparable as well.
Okay.
And I could just add too, this is one of those site decisions, which is absolutely up to the site, and clearly, you did a lot of research, a lot of thinking, talking, to come to this decision. So it's not something that the board needs to vote on. And I applaud you for the amount of work and the amount of input that you got when you came to this decision. Ms. Workman.
I did have one other question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Schlesner.
How integrated with technology is the curriculum?
There's a lot of digital components to this, so that there's a lot of ability to be online. There are a lot of online manipulatives that are wonderful to use. All of the information can be presented digitally, that sort of thing. But it's not something that relies on technology. So, either way, it's a good fit, whether your building has technology or doesn't. So it has the ability to be enhanced with technology and does also very well without technology.
Thank you.
I have several questions. When I was preparing for this meeting for tonight, could you briefly explain, and this might be saying like, you have to take this much and condense it to this, how does the core knowledge mathematics sequence differ from the rest of the district?
That's a great question.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I mean, since this is a core knowledge school, I would assume, and you have chosen to use a different curriculum for your mathematics, I would assume that there's somehow, there's going to be some kind of difference in the sequence from the rest of the district?
There are, yes. And we actually have a curriculum map, K-5, that we've developed that accounts for not only the core knowledge sequence, but the Minnesota standards and the Rochester Public Schools. And to give you specifics on it, I would have to look at the map, to be perfectly honest, because there's a lot of detailed information in there. Our, you know, core knowledge is based on Edie Hirsch and the beliefs that all literate adults need certain pieces of information to be successful in our society, and has laid out very specifically some guidelines for each level. So, and there are portions that are very different from the Minnesota standards, whereas like time and money is not as well-developed in the Minnesota expectations, it's further developed in core knowledge. So there are very specific details that are, you know, different, and we have to enhance.
Where would a person be able to find that sequence? Is that readily available, or?
The core knowledge sequence?
Yeah, the K-5 that you're using.
Yeah.
I mean, is that, how would I find that?
That would be in our books, or on your shared.
There's information at Washington we can get to you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay. May I ask a couple of follow-up?
Yes, but let's remember this is information.
I know, I know, I'm trying to understand this. And then the other question I will ask is, I had several here, sorry. Don asked one of them. Oh, I know. Does core knowledge leave it up to the individual schools then to choose curricula to support what you're doing?
The standards are there.
Okay.
The direction is there.
So you have a fair amount of flexibility with that then?
And core knowledge suggests certain curriculums.
Right.
However, we don't use some of those curriculums that they suggest.
I noticed there were just mountains of lesson plans and materials on the Core Knowledge website that were very interesting, but.
And I don't mean to interrupt you, but I can, Diane, somebody who's been in Washington for over 20.
Well, as a parent, yeah.
Twenty-some years.
Started as a parent 20 years ago.
And as my four years of being in Washington, I've been so impressed with the amount of knowledge and skill in our teachers of becoming curriculum writers, because that's what they've been, for lack of a better term, forced to do in some respects, because of all the creation that they have to develop. It's amazing to see some of the work that they do.
Well, I want to applaud you all for the amount of time and effort you've spent on this. It's great to see, because I know it's going to really benefit our kids well. So, thank you for all of that.
You're welcome. Ms. Becker.
As a parent of two kids who went to Washington, I just want to say thank you for keeping the, you know, keeping core knowledge, you know, in the forefront as you were choosing the math curriculum. I, you know, for our two oldest kids, it was just a wonderful school, and I'm really happy that core knowledge is continuing on and that you're keeping the core knowledge pieces in the forefront as you're looking at the curriculum in math going forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you.
5.02, approval of school board credit. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Janie Gibson, Executive Director, Kirkland Instruction, will brief us on this agenda item.
Good evening, members of the board. Board credit, or school board credit is one of the opportunities that we offer to our staff through Policy 425. It essentially says that courses that are designated by the district and approved by the school board can be purchased for credit towards lane change by the teacher. And so there's certain things that need to be in place for the courses to be selected. They must be at least 12 hours in length. They often are job embedded or job-specific. There's often more than just a one-time shot at it. They're the ongoing classes. They're expected to implement and do follow-up types of work with the content. So what I've submitted to you this evening are all of the courses that, over the course of the 2017, 2018 school year, we have deemed as meeting the criteria of school board credit. And so we're presenting those to you this evening for approval for board credit. Once a course is approved for board credit, it gets marked into the PD Express software, and any participants of those courses get an email, a notification, saying that this has been approved for board credit, and if they choose, they can work through HR to take action on purchasing it for credit, so.
Any questions for Ms. Gibson? This is a briefing item. I'm assuming it's not very controversial, and that making it, would it be convenient to have it moved to action, or do you have time?
Either way, works for us. I'd like to make a motion to move this to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And this is now an action item. We have resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approve the offering of school board credit for the following classes. 1.0 board credit for restarted justice peacekeeping circle training. 1.5 board credit for math intervention training. 1.0 board credit for Nancy Burns envoy training. 1.0 for Nancy Burns' cat in the doghouse. 1.0 board credit for ECFS TS Gold training. 4.0 for Inside Out training. 1.0 board credit for Avid Summer Institute 2017. 1.0 board credit for RALC Online Professional Development Challenges. And 1.0 board credit for math articulation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion about this? Nobody wants to ask about the cat in the doghouse course? You don't want to ask about?
No, I don't want to ask about that, but I'd just like to make a comment that I think it's really good for the public to see at least what some of our professional development courses are that teachers can take. And I know that everybody is always working at it, even if it's not on a specific professional development day, that teachers are always working really hard to stay up with whatever current practices are, learning new information. So, thank you for making these available to them.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Gibson. 5.03, approval of edgenuity contract. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Ms. Gibson will also brief us on this item.
Good evening again. So, we currently, in our high schools, at ALC and in our Hawthorne program, use a computerized program called Odyssey, and it is currently owned by a company, or it was previously owned by a company, that sold, the company was called Compass, they sold it to a different company. And so that new company told us that this was the final school year that Odyssey would be available to us in its current form. So, we got a committee together. It included teachers that use the tool, as well as administrators representing the high schools, and we took a look at what computerized programs there were that would fill our need. And the way this tool is most often used is for credit recovery. However, there are times that we will use it for some accelerated learning opportunities. There are times that we will use it to help with make-up credits or make-up work if a student needs to be away for extended periods of time. So, it's a very flexible model for us to use, and so those were the types of things that we were looking for. So we found four companies that seemed to be able to meet our needs. We educated ourselves, learned more about those four. We brought all four vendors in. We narrowed it down to two, wherein we received the bids, or the price quotes from two of the companies, and a second presentation from each of those companies. After all was said and done, we decided that edgenuity best met our needs. And so, they have proposed to us, or written a quote for us, that includes a three-year contracted service. And so, by doing the three-year contract, it does save us some significant dollars. And so that does put it over the $100,000 threshold. So, we are bringing that forward to you this evening for consideration. And it would be in use in, again, all three of our high schools, in our ALC and in the Hawthorne, credit recovery program, beginning as early as next school year.
Questions? Mr. Barlow.
So, it was my understanding that Odyssey would be available for, could you restate what you had referenced earlier in terms of Odyssey?
So, we have been using Odyssey for many, many years. At the beginning of this school year, they told us that they changed parent companies. They were no longer owned by Compass, they were now owned by another company. And so they would respect our deal with Odyssey, and they would maintain Odyssey, but only for the remainder of this school year and into summer school. So, we knew that we needed to make a change, and so that's what started the study.
Okay, and then the costs, which were previously associated with Odyssey, do you recall if they were?
We were getting incredible deal, yes. We are paying significantly higher with edgenuity. Part of it is, what happened was the cost structure, the way Compass did Odyssey, was they allowed, and in this case, they allowed the ALC to purchase the classroom, or to purchase the libraries, to purchase the license to all of the content areas. And then they said, anybody in the district that is doing credit recovery could use that. And so we had students at the ALC, but we also had students at John Marshall, we had students at Sentry, we had students at Mayo, we had students at Hawthorne. So, they were really, really, really gracious with their, the way they framed the usage of it. Edgenuity has worked really, really hard with us. They haven't been quite as liberal with how they view ALC students and credit recovery, all being almost one in the same. And so, we will be, what this particular contract that's being proposed tonight, it does allow our learners access to at least the same number of courses as what we had, and actually a few more. There are some that edgenuity has, as far as elective-based courses, that we didn't have with Compass, Odyssey, and so we are actually looking to see if that could potentially develop some new opportunities for our students.
So, what I hear you're saying is before, we had one license, and we incorporated a bunch of schools under it. Now, we have to have five licenses?
Well, the license structure that edgenuity uses is they will, the district will purchase X number of seats, and then it doesn't matter where those kids are at, or where those users are at.
Thank you for that explanation.
That's 100 seats, I think I said?
Yeah.
And they're unique licenses, so, for example, if I need it for, you know, let's say the first nine weeks, but then as soon as I'm done with my work, then we can log you onto it, and you use it for the three weeks you need it, and then.
Sure, so it's a floating license model.
Yeah, yeah.
Other questions? Ms. Gibson, could you explain just really quickly, for people who may not be familiar, what credit recovery is and why a program like this is so vitally important to kids who need credit recovery?
Yeah. So there are times, for various reasons, that students may not be able to get a full credit in a course that they're enrolled in. And it may be just one particular quarter was really rough, and they weren't able to get full credit for it. It may be due to absence, it may be due to something in life, it could be for a variety of reasons. So what our teachers do, and what our administrators do, is they work with the students, and they determine, does the learning need to happen by fully repeating the entire course, or were there just bits and pieces that they're missing, and that's keeping them from getting the credit? But also, do they have the foundational learning to be successful at the next level course? Oftentimes, that's what it is. And so, by working either through a success lab or some other type of credit recovery, students can master the learning and obtain the knowledge that they need to be successful in getting that credit towards graduation, but then also have the knowledge that they need and the skills that they need to be successful at the next level of the course.
So this really helps us individualize for that student, what he or she needs to continue moving forward?
And oftentimes, it helps us keep, help our students stay on track for graduation, because as soon as they start falling behind, and they get this deflated feeling. So this is an opportunity for them to stay on path and on track to graduation with their class.
Thank you, Mr. Schlesner.
You had mentioned this was considered more than the other software, so from a budget point of view, which budget cycle will this come from?
All three. So what will happen is, John went to his savings account and will pay for it now, and then he will charge me over the course of the next three years, as well as the and then he will charge me over the course of the next three years, as well as the site budgets. We'll be paying a small portion of this from their site budgets over the course of the next three years.
Mr. Barlow.
Final question for me. 100 seats. Do you believe that's more than enough? Or could you see at any given point in time that there are students in queue waiting to, waiting for other students to timeout?
So, we worked really closely with our representative, who, in full disclosure, happened to be also our Odyssey rep. And so, she knows our district well. She really looked at how we were utilizing the seats in Odyssey, and looked at other districts our size with similar demographics. And so, she really helped us determine the 100 seats that we needed. With that in mind, if we need to go up, then we certainly will increase the number of seats that we need. But we didn't want to purchase 200, and then only use 95 of them. So, we really tried to look at our trend data and our current practices, and take her recommendation as well.
Other questions? Okay, this is a briefing item. Any particular need for speed for this one? No? Okay.
Move to action.
Second.
Well, there you have it. Been moved and seconded to make this an action item. Any discussion? All those in favor of making this an action item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the contract with Edgenuity Incorporated for the comprehensive digital libraries, MyPath Reading, and MathSite licensed e-dynamic electives, and professional development, as shown in the attached document, for a total three-year cost of $167,750.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Five point oh four, closed session.
Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D, Point 05, Subdivision 3B, I move to go into closed session to receive confidential legal advice from the School Board's attorney regarding strategy and options related to an administrative action involving the Minnesota Department of Human Rights.
We are recessed at 6:42 PM.
Second.
There's a second. And now, we're going to vote on this. I knew that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now recessed at 6:43 PM.
Thank you.
This meeting is reconvened at 7:35 PM. Seven point oh one, approval of proposal for architectural and design services for the Bamber Valley Elementary Indoor Air Quality Project. This is a briefing item.
Yes, at this time, Mr. Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations, will brief us on this agenda item. Give me a little time, Scott.
We're going downhill fast.
Good evening, Mr. Sheridan.
Good evening.
Beat me to it. Good evening.
I'm here to brief you on the approval of a proposal for the architectural design services for the Bamber Valley Elementary Indoor Air Quality Project. This project's already been started, as you know, because on April 17th, you approved the construction manager as agent, Knutson Construction, for this project. And so, then on March 29th, we, prior to that, we sent out a RFP for the design services. On April 24th, we received proposals from three firms. And I want to point out that this is a best value project. And we actually sent it out to four firms that were pre-qualified with the district already. And we got back three proposals. Since it's a best value project, four of us from facilities independently rated the project assessment portion and the team qualifications. We provided that to our purchasing manager, who kept tabs of the scores. The next day, we interviewed the three firms, and that was independently scored as well. We also had a representative from Knutson Construction on the interview panel as well, though he was a non-scoring member. After all the scores were tabulated, INS Group, also known as ISG, rated highest. And their fees are $1,115,000 for this project. I want to point out that of the three firms that, all three firms that we interviewed were excellent firms, and would have served us all well. It's just, there were some, a few positives that set apart INS Group, and that's in their interview process, and that's what put them at the top.
Questions? Oh, Ms. Becker.
So, what's in there, so did they, what made their interview different than the others? I mean, did they bring up some additional items that the other groups didn't think about, or what? And if they did, what were those items?
The interesting part about it, this is the, they were pre-qualified, but this is the first time we've ever interviewed them. And part of their proposal was, they have a project manager that's assigned to their team, which none of the other firms have, who has a complete construction background. So, he views it from a construction eyes during the design process. They also had a, part of their proposal is they're going to have an onsite person during the entire construction phase, onsite for that whole summer. So, they'll be there to answer any questions that we might have. If there's submittals that need to be addressed, that person will be right there, onsite the entire project. That was something the others didn't offer. And then, probably the most compelling reason is, since Bamber Valley is a deaf and hardened hearing school, in their proposal, they're having a architecture, architect who's specifically trained in deaf and hardened hearing, design to be on their panel as well, to help them with the design. So, those factors all kind of put them over the top on the interview.
So, can I follow up?
Go ahead.
So, are those, are some of those, aren't some of the things that Knutson Construction, in the management role, be doing some of the same things that their onsite person would be doing? So, is that a duplicate, or?
The person that they're going to have onsite is working for the architectural firm. Knutson works for us, as our representative, and they'll be working hand in hand together on it. That's the way I understand it.
Yeah, I think if I remember attending a couple of the meetings with, on the Lincoln Project this past summer, we had to actually schedule meetings to get their representative there to meet with them. What's nice about this is, if we have a question, there's a person there that day to answer, versus us having to schedule and get everybody together and sit down and talk about an issue that maybe came up. And I attended a couple of those meetings because we were having a few issues, and it'd be nice to have that person right there that day.
And particularly related to the timeline, if you have somebody there, right there, that can answer the questions, things are going to move a lot faster than, like the superintendent said, having to schedule a meeting for next Monday, or the following week.
And this is the project that we actually adjusted the schedules because it's so large, right? So, that's, time is quite imperative in this case.
Yes, it is.
Yes. Just an FYI on that, the meeting conferred, did meet, and looking at the, let me get my year right, the 1920 school calendar, and we hope to finalize that at our next meeting, and bring to the board shortly after, so that was easier to...
1920 or 2019?
19...
1920.
2019, 2020.
Just recently approved, the 1819. But we're almost done with the 1920, and like Mark said, it is, that one will go back to a traditional start time to give us an additional week on that end. And so, we're going to pick up two weeks of extra construction time by doing the calendars that way.
Because we need that time to get these kinds of projects done, which should be a good reason, I think, Mr. Schlesner, as you were sort of intimating that this could maybe get moving sooner. To...
Motion to move action.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is now an action item. Be it resolved that the School District, that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the proposal from INS Group for $1,115,000 for the architectural design of the Bamber Valley Indoor Air Quality Project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just have...
Ms. Becker.
So, in the, so in Attachment B in the scoring spreadsheet, the dollar amount is So, is it the 55,000, or the 1,115?
You're correct. I'm sorry. Yes, I'll have to amend the board, Doc.
So, which one is it?
1,155,000.
155?
Yep.
So, the resolution has been amended to approve the proposal from INS Group for $1,155,000 for the architectural design of the Bamber Valley Indoor Air Quality Project.
I think it's already been moved, second, as long as they're okay with that change?
So, it's been...
We have to vote on the amendment, don't we? Or not?
Yes.
We should vote on the amendment, yeah.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to accept that amendment. Yes, and yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The new resolution, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the proposal from INS Group for $1,155,000 for the architectural design of the Bamber Valley Indoor Air Quality Project. It's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Sheridan. Six point oh two, acceptance of proposals for the sale of the Rochester, of the district's refuse business. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Sheridan will brief us on this item, and I think Andrew's going to join him as well.
Good evening.
Good evening again. I'm here to brief you on the district's refuse business, the proposals that we received. As you know, we have privatized the refuse service through a extended period of time. We researched, and in the end, the board approved the hiring of advanced disposal. And that was on December 12th of 2017. Since that time, we have our remaining two refuse trucks, parking lot full of dumpsters, and our license. And the question there was, we wanted to sell that as a business. And through a lot of work that Andrew has done, working with Olmsted County, the Olmsted County actually holds the license. And in order for us to transfer that license, we have to, we could sell our refuse trucks, dumpsters, and license as a business, because we were qualified as a business. But then, the process for that license transfer requires us to sign an novation agreement with whoever we want to transfer that, or have the county board decide whether they're going to accept the transfer of that license. If we sign that novation agreement, county board reviews. That could be several months down the line from here. And if the county board approves it, then they would, that license would then be in the hands of whoever signs off on that novation agreement. So, we put out on RFP and received six, I believe it was six, proposals back from a variety of companies, a wide range of numbers. And the highest, the highest bid on this one was from Hometown Hollers LLC for $230,000. There are some nuances with the novation agreement, that we've had some conversations with our attorney, that I provided you some information on as well. And so, we're here to answer any questions you might have about it, and do the best we can with it, and then putting that decision, as far as whether you want to accept this bid or not, in your hands.
Questions?
So, a potential stumbling block, I can concede this, is if, if the buyer does not meet their obligations to pay their tipping fees, then we are stuck with that. We have to pay their tipping fees. Is that correct?
It sounds like that, according to the novation agreement, yes.
Right, okay. So, is there any time limit? I mean, I don't mean to impugn the potential buyer by asking these questions. But could a business theoretically say, okay, we've just bought this, but we're not going to pay the tipping fees? And that could go on for...
I think that would be a question for Olmsted County, on how long that they would let a customer, or a client of theirs, go without paying the bill for a particular tipping fee into the Olmsted Waste Energy Facility.
Other questions? Mr. Smith.
We didn't, we priced it as a business going, so we didn't, we didn't RFP this out, just liquidating.
That's correct.
So, so the value to the buyer is that the license comes with it?
If the county board approves it, yes.
I, to be honest, I don't like the idea of being liable for, you know, tipping fee, the tipping fees, if they, for some reason, don't, don't pay that. I don't like that idea. And I don't, I mean, I don't know what we would get, I don't know how much value the license really is. What's the license cost a year?
It's a hundred-dollar renewal fee to renew the license. Now that we are not in the refuse hauling business, I don't believe Olmsted County will renew our license, because we're not utilizing it after, after this year. It is valid through December 31st of 2018.
So, just a follow-up question on that. So, tell me if I'm understanding this correctly. So, if, if we decided to reject this potential buyer, then we would be able to sell all of our equipment that we currently have for roughly...
Guessimating 30,000 to 50,000, potentially more, if we're having a good day and find a good buyer that's really interested in it.
And then, and then a quick follow-up question to that. I mean, we're sort of dependent on the goodwill of the county board, correct? In terms of, first of all, approving this, and then, second of all, if they were to be remiss in paying their tipping fees to get on it right away, so that we're not stuck with the bill? I mean, from Olmsted County's perspective, they could look at it and say, well, we don't really care who pays the tipping fee. I guess, you know, I'm, maybe, I don't, once again, I don't mean to, to assign malice to anyone, but I'm just trying to think of what some of the worst possible scenarios we could get into with this. And, you know, so, so really, what we're looking at is selling all of the equipment and a license for $230,000 versus, to them, in assuming that Olmsted County approves it. And then, if we didn't do that, we would sell our stuff for $30,000. So, we're looking at a difference between 230,000...
Approximately 200.
Plus a piece of risk.
Yes.
I know on occasion, we, the district will meet with interested parties. In this instance, I'm wondering, has there been any outreach to the county to find out what their position may be, some goodwill? We, the Rochester Public School, you know, agency, that we would like to believe they would free us from this obligation, have there been any discussions regarding that with them?
We did talk to them after one attorney brought up some of their concerns about the novation agreement. And at that time, they weren't interested in making any modifications to the novation agreement to release that particular language that we were concerned about.
And that went through the county attorney?
Mr. Smith.
Is the, this holler going to do the county's hauling that we were doing?
No, they would not be.
They're not doing it, so there's no tie... They're not doing it, so there's no tie to what we were doing for the county to this?
No.
So the county's the one that is putting this requirement on us, not the, not the buyer?
Correct. It's an Olmsted County refuse hauler's license.
Mr. Schwesner.
You'd mentioned that the county most likely will not renew our license after the end of the year. So is this agreement through the end of the year, or is it forever?
I think what he, what he was saying that if, after a certain period of time of not using the license, it just goes away. But if the new owner took over, wouldn't be using it, the license would just, would be ongoing for them. It just wouldn't be in, in our name. But after a period of time of not using it, they would just say-
Right, so as long as they are using it, then we could potentially be liable.
Yes, we, we, that's, we made that pretty clear.
That is crazy. Well, that's-
Yep.
Chair Moll.
Oh, go ahead.
Yep, so, would it work to just let the license expire? And then would that business be willing to still have the same deal? Or would they then have to apply for a new license from Olmsted County? And would you have any idea what the likelihood of Olmsted County, you know, granting them that license might be?
Right now, county ordinance states that once a license is either bought out or dissolved, then the number of available licenses in the county is reduced by one.
Okay.
So there is no-
So nobody could get it?
Correct. At this point, unless the county would choose to amend their ordinance.
Yeah, I, I, for me, I guess it's, it's a decision between, the license has no value to us anymore. I mean, we're not gonna use it anymore. It either can just go away in the, in the sunset, and we get what we can out of the trucks and remaining dumpsters we have left, or we make $230,000. But with that comes some risk that if the new buyer doesn't fulfill its requirements, they could come back on us and hold us responsible for that. So do we wanna take the risk with the $230,000? Or do we just, we don't wanna take that risk, then we just let the license go away? And then we sell our trucks for whatever we can get for.
So could you give me a ballpark number as to how much we spend in a year on tipping fees?
Well, right, right now, contract.
But how much we did?
Uh, it was around 200,000 if I remember my numbers correctly.
Okay, so that would buy us one year of paying their tipping fees if it came to that?
Depending on how many customers they had. They might tip. Tipping fees are by the tonnage.
Okay.
So depending on how much tonnage they were tipping.
So they could have millions in tipping fees.
Potentially, if they had enough of a customer base.
Well, and it's a large company. It's my understanding, it's a pretty large company. I mean, it, it also has, they, they haul refuse in other areas of-
Hometown Hollers is based out of Dodge Center, so they're bigger in the Dodge County market. They would be entering the Olmsted County market. Only Olmsted County garbage would come to Olmsted County Waste-to-Energy Facility.
Okay.
Yeah, Hometown Hollers actually Dodge, Steel, Mauer, Wasika Counties. And their, their interest is getting into Western Olmsted County.
How long have they been in the business, do you know?
I think I'd said, uh, 2003, but I'm not quite sure.
Okay, yeah, I think that sounds right.
The, the county by limiting the number of license have created a market value to these licenses that are far and above what the annual cost of the license is. Because you need to have the license in order to do, in order to do business. Same thing happens with liquor license in town. But in my mind, I, I can't support, I can't support this just because I think it, it, it just, we have to assume too much risk with this because, because of that nuance. We're assuming the risk and it's not, I understand why the county, like, because we know, we're, we're, we're good for it. We'll, we'll have to pay it. They know we're good for it. Maybe this, maybe this hauler is, I assume is good for it, but for some reason they're not. Then they, they fall back on us. I just don't, I would just be in favor of just liquidating it. Whatever we get out of, we get out of it and not have that risk at all if we can't resolve that satisfactorily. We'd like to say, like Superintendent says, we don't care what number of licenses there are in the county. We, we're getting out of it. We don't care that it's gonna go away by one. Maybe the county does. If that's the case, they want more competition, and they should work with us here on, on that, on that requirement.
We have, we have this resolution in front of us. I'm just wondering if you have, we have an idea about how we wanna move forward in terms of a different resolution, or what's the will of the board?
I guess I, I would suggest that, uh, you move it to action and then vote on it. You can either vote, vote it down, or if you vote it down, then it just goes away and we sell our trucks and dumpsters for what we can. Or if it gets approved, then we, we sell it, so.
One other thing, too, there's, there's no guarantee that Olmsted County's gonna approve any of this anyway.
Correct.
Correct.
So they might take care of the problem for us. But I'm not sure if I would wanna rely on them making it the problem go away for us.
From what I've heard from the Olmsted County is they'll do their due diligence on a potential buyer to make sure that they're solid in their past business practices.
Well, then, if that's the case, could we maybe just table this? And then buy some time to see, get some, that to work through, and if they're satisfied with that buyer and the creditworthiness of that, and it's not a concern for them, then maybe they'll let us out of that requirement.
I believe we have to sign the novation agreement in order to start that process on their end.
Positive, but?
Yes, you would.
And then we're back to square one.
Yeah.
Ms. Seelinger.
No.
Deborah, do you have it?
Okay. Thank you. So my question is about the novation agreement. Is there, is there a time limit? I mean, if, I mean, 10 years from now, they can come back and ask for these tipping fees to be paid back, correct?
Actually, if, for instance, if Hometown Hollers decides to go out of business and transfer the license to someone else and go through the novation process. If we do it, and then Hometown Hollers does it, it'll just continue on.
And we're still responsible?
We'd be probably second removed by them, hopefully, but, but I don't know.
Are there other companies that, I mean, this is really bizarre. I don't know, I mean-
This agreement's gonna be the same regardless of the company we would sell to.
Yeah.
No, I understand that, but I don't understand how the county can say that, I mean, we're selling this to a different entity and forever we're liable.
It's just the way that the ordinance is writ, the ordinance is written.
Yeah, we had both our out-of-town and local attorneys look, look into this. They both pretty much gave us the same answer that the way that's currently written, we would have some liability forever.
Did I have, here's someone move this to action?
Not yet.
I didn't.
One, one quick clarifying question. I seem to have a lot of them tonight, sorry. So on, on this novation agreement, Olmsted County has said absolutely not. They're not gonna do anything differently on it, to change it so that we aren't liable. Is that correct?
I don't think they said absolutely not. They reviewed it with the Olmsted County Attorney who said they're, they're declining to change any of the language in the novation agreement.
That, that the attorney is declining?
County attorney.
The county, okay, so he's the one who would make the decision, not Olmsted County Commission?
No, we asked the county attorney about the language in the novation agreement. They could change it if they wish. County board still would need to approve the licensed piece of it, the county board itself.
I guess, I'm gonna pin it out that we tabled this item. And that you go back and you talk to them and maybe see if we get some clarity. If they, if they don't care that there's one less license, then, you know, then I guess I don't care. If, if they wanna work with us to maintain a license, to have more competition in the marketplace, then maybe they'll be more willing to, you know, do something with that agree, with that agreement. If they've got some capability, if they can't, they say they can't do it, then we can, we can deal with it at that time. I mean, I'd like to give time to see if something could be worked out here to, to, before the buyer. And, you know, it's to our advantage to do that, perhaps to the buyers. But if the county's gonna put us in a predicament, in a, in a position where we have to say either yea or nay, you know, I can, I can vote, I can vote nay now if you wanna do that. But I think it might be better just to say, hey, can buy some little bit of time to see if this can be worked out amicably between all the parties.
Discussion then is, should this be tabled or moved to action?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's tabled. It's just, it's brief.
It's just a briefing item.
Comes up the next meeting, we can have that answer. I don't, I'd really, these gentlemen have had more than one conversation with the county. And I don't really anticipate we're gonna get a different answer than that's the way it's, the law or rule, whatever they call it, is written. We can go out to them again and say, would, is there any interest in revising that piece of it?
Well, if you're, if you're, if you're telling us you're relatively sure there isn't gonna be any change in it, I mean, I can vote right now, too. I can, I can do that.
Well, the last conversation we had was prior to-
But you hadn't talked to us, you hadn't talked to us prior to that. So the difference here, they talked to the board, and the board now, hey, the board's gonna, you know, if they don't wanna, if they wanna keep the license alive, then they gotta deal with this. They don't care, then we don't care, then we can do what we thinks in our, in the best interest of our, of the district. But I think it does buy time to see if it, if that would make a difference if the, where the board is.
Ms. Seelinger.
I, I think I can, I can support not moving this to action. I, and if there's further conversation at the county, um, you know, this is because of, because of the way their policy, procedure, whatever, is written, and they're not willing to change that. I, I understand that, but I would also perhaps find out to them that, you know, this is costing us potentially $200,000 that the district could really use, just if they want to, you know, draw their line in the sand and say, no, we're gonna keep you accountable till the end of time. I don't know if that would sway them at all. But should they be inclined to be swayed by that argument, I would offer that we make that.
Ms. Workman.
Is it really Olmsted County Commission that we have to deal with, or is it the, the attorney? I mean, who's, who's the, I hate to say the bigger stumbling block right now. Who do, who would we have to convince?
I would say it's the county attorney, because they're the ones that would change the language in the actual agreement.
It's also policy, so the-
Yeah, so the county commissioners would eventually have to approve any changes that the county attorneys recommend, so.
Wouldn't it be the, the commissioners that would, would or would not want to keep the license alive or let it go?
Potentially.
So that's what I was going to suggest. It might behoove us to, be it at the CEO level, superintendent, or individual board members testifying before the county board, bringing this to their attention, asking them to review the current policy and to, um, perhaps modify the language of it. It's nothing we, we vote on, but I think sometimes we just accept the, what is written. Even we as a board realize that policies can be modified. And I think the same thing is true with the, uh, at the county level. And I'll certainly put some action behind my comment and find out when the county commission meets next and perhaps bring this to their attention.
Okay, so my sense is that we are just gonna leave this as a briefing item at this time? Okay, thank you. 7.03 approval, thank you. 7.03 approval or revisions to the Policies and Procedures Manual. The policy committee members will brief the board on three or six policies.
Okay, I guess that's my job tonight. Yes, it is. Yes? I know, you're not, you're not fighting me for the honor tonight, so. No, no, not this time. Okay, so, um, Policy 604 has to do with instructional curriculum. And I was so intent on this last item, I need to pull some things out, okay? So in Policy 604, there was a, um, a change on the first page under Roman numeral 2A3 that says that we will be including civics in our social studies curriculum. We did ask Jane about this, whether we are required to have a separate civics course. And we are not because we embed civics all throughout our social studies curriculum, basically K-12. And then MDE was added to Minnesota Department of Education, just that acronym. And then finally, on the very last page, um, this language under Roman, too much stuff to look at, two, five? Thank you. Has to do with the civics test questions. And I know there was, uh, one, one board member contacted me and said, this doesn't make any sense in terms of, and we had that discussion as well. That the students are required to pass 30 out of 50 questions. It does not affect whether or not they graduate, and that does not have to be on their transcript. So I checked very carefully. It's not just MSBA language. This is the statute with two very small changes. Uh, federal law, that was changed to federal law. It had been listed in the United States Code. And, um, the statute also has Minnesota Legacy Website added to it. But that's, those are the only two very small differences between what's in this policy and what is statute. So I think we have really no control over approving this when it comes before the board in the next meeting. Does anybody have any questions about that one? Okay, 613, um, graduation requirements and... There were a couple of questions on this one as well, under Roman numeral 5, letter D. A student's progress toward career and college readiness must be recorded on the student's high school transcript. And, um, perhaps, Ms. Gibson, if I screw this up, you can come and correct me. There, right now, there are two boxes that can be checked, progress towards college readiness or progress towards career readiness. And that's about it. Maybe ACT would also be on there. But as I was reviewing this before tonight, I'm wondering if we could remove all of section Roman numeral 5 because it's, it, it's requirements for students who graduated in 2017. And I don't know if we need to keep that language in this policy since the time has expired for those freshmen. I don't know if that, does that need to go back to the policy committee, Wendy, or? I mean, we're not voting on it tonight anyway, so.
Yeah, it seems to me the policy committee would wanna revisit that one.
Okay, and we don't meet again until May 21st, so.
15th.
Yeah, the next board meeting is May 15th, but the policy committee doesn't meet until the 21st after. So it'll be the June meeting that this would come back with that removal. 613, you wanna go back to that? Policy committee ready? Yep, just for that elimination piece. And then, the other one briefed was 624. And in this policy, it's addressing online learning providers. There was new language that was added under definitions. And, um, Roman numeral 4, the language that's in yellow that's been added was from the MSBA policy directly, but it's under their procedures section as opposed to their policy section. So it's just in a little bit different place. Roman numeral 6, classroom membership and teacher contact time. We decided we only needed classroom membership, so, and teacher contact time was removed. And that's also reflected under, or, uh, letter B, under Roman numeral 6. And I think that about does it for that policy. Does anybody have any questions on that one? We also took a look at the legal status of the School District 101. And we have made no changes to that. I think every, 101.01, the name of the school district, we decided to keep it the same. We're not going to change that, although I think it was of great interest to most of us who did not maybe understand that the official name is the Rochester Public Schools-Independent School District 535. But that if that happened to, the latter piece happened to be omitted on any of our legal work, it would not affect that legal work. So we're kind of off the hook on that one, if we need to. And then 102 was the equal- And then 102 was the equal educational opportunity. We reviewed that one as well and are not recommending any changes at this time.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Becker?
That was the one that the students also talked about, wasn't it? That they wanted that during your listening session at the high schools, the students want another policy. And in our policy committee, I felt I was, you know, I'm happy that, you know, that students are looking at policy and wanting to add things to policy. But as we were looking at at this particular policy, we I think we as a committee felt that so their policy, I guess we need to talk about what their policy was. They they wanted it was for gender equality. They had they had some some specific languages.
Gender inclusion.
Yeah, that they wanted. But we really felt that this policy took that into account. And and again, I appreciate the students, you know, wanting to be part of the process and and looking at policies and and, you know, and being part of the process. But again, I think this one takes into account what they're what they were wanting to add. So I think it can stay the same.
And well, and that's what we we decided at that at our committee meeting, but to bring it up, right?
I felt that we should acknowledge that the students, you know, went to the trouble of, you know, trying to come up with a policy that they felt was important. And, you know, so I I just think we should mention that, you know, that they that they're looking at policies and, you know.
And the example that they used, they have not developed their own policy. The example they used was from St. Paul Public Schools.
Yeah.
Is a possible framework. But I mean, I'm I would certainly be interested in if if the students would like to pursue this further and actually come up with a policy to present to the board that's not somebody else's policy, just to listen to what their their points of view are, not saying that we would necessarily accept it or not. My feeling, I I would agree with you, Anne, that I think right now, gender covers a lot of, covers everything. And the the interesting thing about this, the St. Paul Public Schools was it was really a list of definitions that I think most people, many people are not aware of.
And if I could just comment briefly. And I was in prep, though I am a part of the policy committee, I've not been able to attend. Though for me, not specific to this particular policy under discussion, is how we involve our students and value their input regarding policies, which I think you were acknowledging there, Director Becker. And I think it's important that we be able to communicate to them how they can continue to do that. And to not necessarily find fault in their reference material, be it a policy from a different district or something they find online, it's just to encourage that effort and to potentially realize that those students may be the next school board members.
Yeah, and and the superintendent, I mean, was, you know, he's like, you know, I went to the listening session and I thought, well, maybe they'd be talking about the food. But no, they're, you know, looking at policies, coming up, you know, finding policies online or looking at different schools. And and again, like, the, you know, superintendent has mentioned several times that, you know, our students are really wonderful young adults and they do care about their, you know, the schools and 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 moving forward, so.
I think it's a really good example of their critical thinking skills and how they really think about things that matter.
Well, in short of changing the policy, I think that we have numbers of students who could do a lot of really good work in terms of helping to educate the community and others, well, I guess the community includes about everybody, in a number of different ways. They have a lot of information. They have, I think we really, I think they are empowered. And in in terms of educating us, I think that they could be some excellent teachers for our community. Any other questions? Okay, 7.04, closed session.
Pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision three, I make a motion to move into closed session to discuss potential real estate transactions. And immediately following, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.03 subdivision one, I move to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations.
Second. On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are recessed at 8:17 PM. We are reconvened at 9:23 PM.
I move to amend the agenda to add the following item, ratification of the 2017 to 2019 Rochester Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. 7.06, ratification of the 2017-2019 Rochester Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. This is an action item.
Are you starting us off, Mike?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Oh, you want me to go with the question?
Got it. Okay, before we get started, just first I want to say, I personally and our team wants to thank Dan and his team for getting to where we are here tonight. I think it was a really positive process. And hopefully, as we go through the highlights of the changes in the contract, then you'll see how we think it's a good contract for both both parties. And and we're really excited that we were able to resolve some of the issues that we had and and come to an agreement. And so the first slide here tells you who the members of the district negotiating team and then the REA negotiating team. And we have no signal. Oh, there we go. Here here are the dates that we met. As a reminder, the way the process works, we cannot start negotiating process until the particular group that we were working with sends a letter of intent that they want to start negotiations. We received that in June. June 22nd was more of a meet and greet. Both teams kind of met and just kind of got to know each other a little bit. And then those are the dates that we met. There were two meetings that were scheduled that were canceled, one due to illness to a member of our team. And then the other was the weather kind of got in the way, so we ended up canceling that one. We had a total of 10 meetings. I would say probably that the meeting on March 23rd, when we met from 12 to 7, was probably the most productive. And I think we, as we talked, once we were done that moving forward, next time, we will probably schedule longer time periods at our sessions. Because what we found is we were doing two hour sessions, there was a little bit of conversation, you would caucus, and you'd come back, and then it was time to schedule the next meeting. So the longer time tends to give us more time to really talk back and forth. I think there were some people who who questioned the the amount of time it took to get to the agreement that we're sharing with you tonight. But I would I would say that this probably explains why that was. When we started, the district had 16 language items that we introduced. They had 12 language items they introduced. And then we almost like we're negotiating an additional contract when we brought in the ABE group and the ECFE group. And they had 15 language changes, recommendations, and 18. So if you look at the number of language items that were discussed, I think that probably explains why it probably took a little bit longer to work through that many different language items. And I know at least since I've been here, that's by far more language items than we've ever had in negotiations. So I think that kind of explains why it took maybe a little bit longer than maybe some people preferred.
Just to hit the highlights, this is not an inclusive, all-inclusive list of the key language changes, but I'll go through some of those to highlight. Emergency sick leave pool, we did some refining on the language on that. There's some language in there that talks about that there needs to be documentation by a physician and in a written form turned in and approved. That is not in the process right now. Maternity disability leave, we removed the language that restricted maternity leave immediately after an unpaid leave. Mileage, the the language around mileage reimbursement was overcomplicated, and we really pared that down and got away from some of the the language in there that just didn't seem to make sense or made sense maybe at an earlier time. workload, we came to an agreement that we would recognize the current practices of providing additional support for students at both the middle school through academic success and advisory and the high schools through academic seminar, that those are acceptable practices and would continue. As far as adult basic education and early childhood family education, we made a number of changes there. Real, I'll just again hit the highlights. There's a reduction in prep time for teaching. There actually is an increase in their hourly pay, and to achieve that, they did have to reduce their prep time. So there's kind of a a give in in that or a a reduction in that, but there's still a benefit for the teacher. We had a paid lunch in there, and we wanted to make that an unpaid lunch to be consistent with our other positions in the district. There was some old outdated grandparent language from a joint memorandum. There's unlimited accumulation of sick days for adult basic education teachers, and we clarified their transfer process into K-12 positions. And then we changed the leadership position pay from an hourly rate to a just a flat stipend of $1,200 per year. As far as early childhood family education, we had added language to define what their FTE is. That was lacking, and that helps us define benefits. And then language continue clarifying language related to continued employment, recall from layoff. And similar to ABE, clarify those transfer rights into K-12 positions.
The next part of it was our memorandums of agreement. The MOAs are pieces of the contract that have a finite time limit to them. And so as you'll see, as I go through the three items that we did MOAs on, their expiration date. And these are things that when we begin to negotiate, I hate to say it, in a year from now when we open negotiations again, that we'll look at, and it's something that could be extended, could be brought into the contract itself. So the three that we started with or the three we're doing is, the first one was an MOA on on limiting the number of morning meetings between that eight and 8:50 time to six in a month. And that is to, we'll keep track of that. It's to help see if we can get staff talking about kids in other ways other than having staff meetings and PLCs and everything else. There's other things that have been missing from that time, so we're we'll keep track of that as a group and see how that works out. The next one is an MOA on teacher safety and classroom safety. And it just talks about reimbursement for eyeglasses, hearing aids. There are times when things get broken, personal property, and so talking about reimbursement. One of the important ones was if a student comes into a classroom and they have a history of physical assault, does a teacher know that? Are they equipped to know what might set that student off or what the reasoning is behind it so we can avoid being the trigger for that behavior? And then another piece was if a staff member is hurt, that they would have three days or request of up to three days of paid leave to either, you know, see the doctor or recoup or whatever that would not be taken directly from their sick leave. And then the last piece of that was if a teacher feels like they're being harassed by a parent, to talk with their administrator so the administrator can take appropriate action. And it was something that was happening, but now it's kind of written so all staff know about it. And the last piece of it was talking about unrequested leave of absences. ULAs, the language is changing, and we've got to get in in line with that Minnesota statute. And so we've agreed that, starting next year, REA and the district will get together and draft new ULA language. So that's one of our MOAs.
In terms of financial settlement with our teachers, there is going to be a cost of living adjustment in both years of the contract for 17, 18, the year we're in right now. There would be a 3% improvement to the salary schedule to each cell. And then in 18, 19, it's going to be about 2.5%. Something we did different this time, we tried to put our heads together and be creative and come up with a total dollar budget and stay within the total dollars rather than being tied into specific, it has to be a step, it has to be a COLA, there has to be lane changes, so on, so forth. So we did no step movement for the first year, since that year is almost over at this point, and then one step move in the 18, 19 year. Lane changes, so if teachers have pursued additional education beyond their bachelor's or master's degrees, those would be approved for both years. And then retro pay, this is really different, too. Normally, it goes all the way back to the first day of the contract. This time, we're doing it for only half of the year, so about from the second semester forward. And then in our athletics and activities areas, the coaches are not getting an increase in pay for this year, but they are going to get a 2.5% increase for next year on those stipend amounts. And athletics and activities may, coaches may not necessarily be teachers, but it is covered under our teacher contract. So this is where we negotiate that. Some other changes to the financial parameters, 403B matches. Currently, we give $500. If the teacher will put up $500 of their money into a 403B, the district will put 500. That's being doubled and going to 1,000 next year if if the teacher also puts in 1,000. Severance pay, which is a program that's been in place for a good number of years, where you get paid for your unused sick days at retirement, is going to be sunset for new teachers that are hired starting July 1st. So all teachers that are hired through June 30th will still qualify for that program, but it is going to be going away starting next year for brand new teachers into the district. Life insurance is being modified to be at $150,000 flat rate for all teachers instead of just two times the salary. So this particularly benefits the younger teachers that are hired at the lower salary amounts. And then for the first time, there's going to be a dental cap, so $50 per month for single and 115 for family is the max the district will pay when the rates go above that. And then teachers will start contributing to the dental premiums. Again, just wanted to reiterate that the financial parameters of this contract stay exactly within the total dollar amount of our forecast and our budget that the school board gave us. So that's good news. We're not here having to ask for more money. And then, well, good news, I guess, depending on what side of the table you're sitting on, but we're staying within budget, and that's what I my role is. Salary schedule is improved in both years of the contract, but is enhanced more favorably in the 18, 19 school year. And really, that builds into the future. It gets those rates up higher because of the 3% and 2.5%. And it helps us become more regionally competitive than when hiring new teachers into the district in future years. Again, pay increases for education are approved in both years, and we have a dental cap now in place. I'm going to talk about the forecast in just a second. So this is, we put this together just to kind of show what the board gave as a budget. Last year, we spent $118.8 million on teacher pay and benefits. We were working within a 3% for this year and a 3% for next year. So all total, all in, $248 million across two years for teacher pay and benefits. And if you jog over to the right side of the screen, that's exactly what we did. It's just we didn't do it in the same way. We're going to spend $121 million in this current year, but we're going to spend $127 million on teacher pay and benefits next year. As we go out, a couple of years, one potential, is this the way we were creative, potentially could have an effect known as tails, where it could become more expensive in the outlying years, depending on, you know, what parameters we have to work in at at that time. If we're going to stay within kind of the budget forecast that we're projecting long term as a finance department, we're going to be very tight on the next contract. So that's just an important thing to note, that because we're getting our salaries up higher in 18, 19, we have a little less wiggle room to stay within parameters for the next two-year cycle. Just some facts about salaries. So our Just some facts about salaries, so, um, our new hire teachers right out of college with a bachelor's degree last year were being paid $36,859. Um, the salary schedule will be improved to $37,965 for this year, and then $38,938 for next year, so we were able to get about $2,000 of increase for new hire teachers. If you look at the bottom line there, and it's called EDS for Education Specialist Step 24, so kind of a late career, um, somebody who's been here a good number of years with, uh, a lot of education beyond, uh, their bachelor's degree, they're at $74,390 last year, by next year, they're gonna be up to $78,366. Sixty-three percent of our teachers are gonna be making $60,000 or more per year next year, uh, 59% will be at $65,000 or higher, 38% will be at $70,000 and higher, and 19% of our teachers will be at $75,000. The average amongst all the teachers that were here when we put the costing document together is gonna be $62,533. And that's the end of our presentation.
Any questions?
I have one question. Could you tell us about how, what percentage of our teachers hold master's degrees or higher?
Yes, we actually looked that up, um, on the report card site for Education Department of State of Minnesota today, and it was 63.3%.
I mean, I think that really speaks a lot for our teaching staff. All of our teachers are wonderful wherever they are in their career, but it's just, it's very heartening to me to see that teachers are really invested in their own professional development, their own, you know, going forward in college and so on, because ultimately, this really helps our students, so...
If there are no other questions, I'll read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby ratify the 2017-2019 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the Rochester Public Schools and the Rochester Education Associate, Association, REA employees.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Mr. Smith?
I just want to say thank you to the administration and to REA for, for getting this done and staying within budget, budget parameters and what have, you know, this is a stressful period for everybody to go through, but it's really, it shows good when administration and teachers are working together like that, and, you know, the students see that, the community sees that, it's, we all benefit from that, so thank you to, to both sides for your hard work on this.
I think everyone on the Board echoes that, so thank you. Any other discussion? All those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
May I take the time to, I've got three of our members here tonight, and I'd like to thank them for all their work.
This meeting is adjourned at 9:41 PM.